Council. I'd like to call to order the City Council Committee of the whole meeting for June 24th, 2024, and we have all our council members but one here. Thank you, Ellen, for phoning in. I'd like to add to the agenda before we approve it, a discussion of consultant contract to explore the possibility of a levy lid lift in 2025, so we could just talk briefly about that and I could get a sense of the council on that topic. So with that addition to the agenda, do I have?
Would you like to add it as?
Oh, at the end. Yeah, D. D, thank you. As item D. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment?
The moved second.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We have no, we don't do online public comment anymore. So is anyone signed up?
Only one signed up, Alexandra Davis.
Okay.
I'm sorry, not wishing to see.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So with that, I will close public comment. Now we'll move on to the first discussion topic, which is Resolution 241957, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for consultant services with Facet for Phase Two of the Lakefront Improvements Project. And I understand, Corey, you're online and you're going to kind of talk about that topic for us. This is our second or third touch. Which is it? Oops.
That's our second and then Thursday's the third.
Yes, Mark, could you perhaps get us started since this is the second touch? Oh, Corey, you're here. Sorry, Corey, we still can't hear you. You're just like in freeze frame. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mark Hoffman, Energy Development Director. This item was at your last meeting or first?
Thank you. This is second touch leading to your next meeting on the 27th for potential action. This is a contract for services. The terms are in your materials. There was one change to a date that was made through the city clerk today. Those materials were forwarded to you and that's to change 2025 to 2026 on page approximately 18. Nothing to add, and I'm hoping that Corey can patch in and respond to any questions you may have. Sometimes when she signs back on, the volume works.
Well, council members, we do have Amber here in case you have questions on the schematic design that we were talking about taking next steps on. She does seem to be able to talk. Yes, council member Levo.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Question before was in terms of authorizing the contract, I was concerned about that the authorization was for 1.1 million roughly, and yet we don't have that total amount of funding. So I'd asked how we were going to address the delta between authorization of the contract and whether or not we were going to issue it in parts to reflect the funding that was available.
Right, I don't think the.
One of you has to. I don't think the amendment was made. I remember the question at the first touch at your first meeting about phasing. There is reference to as funding may become available. It's not fully funded, and so that question should be answered before the 27th unless Phil has some input tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. And so in your last budget amendment that you're working on, you allocated roughly $600,000. I can't remember the exact amount to get through the end of this year. You do have sufficient funding in your capital facilities line item for the full amount of the contract, but you would allocate the rest of that for your in your upcoming biennial budget.
Yes.
So I'm not comfortable authorizing a contract per dollar amount for that is not otherwise reflected in the available funding. I'm fine if you want to authorize the contract, but that I would like to see it authorized in parts to reflect our available funding rather than we're authorized a total amount for funding, which has not been otherwise committed.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have that change for the third touch, which will be Thursday.
And also if that's the consensus of the council, we can work after tonight to make that reflective change. This is the second time it was brought up, so staff's taking it as the consensus. I don't hear opposition.
Council members, Councilmember Riddle.
Yeah, I, okay, so we have the funds, but we haven't gone into the next budget cycle, so we haven't been able to identify it as this, and we can't identify it for this until the next budget cycle.
Correct. Otherwise, you would have committed all 1.2 million dollars during your budget amendment this last go around. That makes it difficult to carry that forward into the upcoming biennium.
Okay, but the expectation is that's what is going to be coming to us in the next biennium is the remainder of the funding?
Yes, the ending fund balance for the fund that we're talking about is around two and a half million dollars at the end of 2024. So there is sufficient funding, but you'll need to allocate that in your next budget cycle.
Okay, because I'm just wondering, we got a few days here, and for the work it will take to parse this into a chunk that's approximately 600,000 for this year, I just don't know if that's a reasonable expectation in the next three days, two and a half days. So I guess either we make that request and we delay the June 27th decision until we can get that done properly. I don't want it to be a rush job and miss things, or we come up with another way of accepting this as is with the understanding that our intention is to allocate it in the next budget cycle, which we cannot do until November.
Director. Director Hoffman. Jeff, is that possible, or would it take longer than to make that adjustment? Would it take longer than between now and Thursday? Do you have any sense of that?
I'd like to give it a shot tomorrow, see what we can do, and then answer that question so they'll get soundtrack.
That's fine. Other council members, could I hear from you, please?
I remember that being a request before, so I was expecting that to be in the material this time.
Good.
So I concur.
I concur. Okay. Council member?
Yeah, I also concur, but I think it seems to be the consensus of the council that we were moving forward. It's just a matter of making sure that we have the money allocated, but that we are moving forward with the project.
And Councilmember Saunders, your sense?
Sorry, it's the Wi-Fi is really, really patchy. I'm, you're cutting in and out.
So the question is, would you support an amendment? Okay, you can't hear. Okay. Well. So. Thank you very much. And we look forward to having this on the agenda. I think none of us are of the view that this should be delayed or that this should not be fully funded. It's a matter of protocol. With that, we'll move on to item B. With that, we'll move on to item B, ordinance 241290, traffic safety camera amendments. And I think our city administrator is going to give us an update.
I'm going to sit at the table with you if you don't mind. So this is for consideration this coming Thursday night, 12, 241290, and these are amendments to our automatic traffic safety cameras legislation. There are a few changes in here that I wanted to make note under section 11006010. There's a change in the RCW to RCW 46630001. 170B subsection two was eliminated during the last legislation, so that's just a correction to follow those changes. And then at the bottom, you'll see in red, there is the inclusion of the new types of traffic cameras for violations on state highways, which are also classified as a city street under chapter 4724 RCW. That would be Bothell Way and SR 104. Speed violations in locations where the city has deemed a high crash risk of excessive speeds, and then public transportation only lane violations. That would be a future traffic camera that would be available to the city council once BRT is up and running for violations within those, as we see quite often, vehicles, just passenger vehicles using those lanes. On the second page, under section 2106020, notice of infraction, just correcting the RCW to match the new language. Under 1006030 in section 3, prima facie presumption, previously this just referred to stoplight and school zone. Traffic cameras, this language changes it so it encapsulates all of the types of cameras that the city has the ability to put in place. And then under section 4D, this is the exception that allows a 50% reduction. This is eligibility under Medicaid and WIC. So those are the changes for the ordinance you have for consideration on Thursday night. If you have any questions, anything you want us to bring back on Thursday night?
Questions or comments, council members? Councilmember Riddle?
Thank you. Violations of traffic ordinances on state highways. Is there somewhere a list of what those traffic ordinances are? Is it the entire RCW? I'm curious what the scope of that covers.
Sure exactly what they mean by that.
Nope.
Somebody. It's one of those nights. What they mean by that language, what it means in our case is the ability to have enforcement cameras. So it's for the speed enforcement cameras that are now allowed under state law on state highways that are considered local streets, and that's something that WashDOT has to do every year. They go through and identify those streets. They then publish that, and the city clerk has a copy of the most recent publication, and those two roadways are classified as city streets that are state highways. Yeah, they are purely speed cameras. Yes.
Other questions or comments? City Administrator Hill, I just want to confirm what we discussed last time, which is these are all amendments that help us fit under the umbrella of the changes in the state law that came about this year, this session.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll take this up again. It will be our fourth touch on Thursday. Thank you very much. And with that, we will go to the presentation from Core regarding analysis of Sound Transit Bus Rapid Transit Project along State Route 522. Thank you and welcome all who are here to listen to the presentation.
There we go. I have more if we need them. Now that I think about it, maybe I shouldn't have used so much paper. I also have to admit, I'm extremely nervous about this because.
Don't be nervous.
Well, our mayor let his hair down, and I'm, my palms are sweaty. So I'll try to, try to do my best and then work all the materials here. So.
We didn't know we were going to have comedy associated with your presentation, but council members, I think if we can go through this and then hold your questions and comments till the end.
Trying to figure out how to advance this to the, okay, so really the question we have here, and by the way, all these people are here in support. Nobody's taught, nobody's here to make a presentation or a speech. They're showing their support to the council, and I'm grateful that they showed up. So the, sort of the topic of this is what will our legacy be? And I used our little graphics that I think capture really the nature of what we're facing in our community. It's either going to be this lovely community that we've come to grow and love, or it could easily turn into this transit tunnel, virtually virtual transit tunnel, long retaining walls, graffiti attractive, loss of five acres, so on and so forth. So that's really what we're kind of focused on talking about here. Again, I have to remember which, hang on. Okay. Why is this message so hard to get across to Sound Transit? There's a simple way for Sound Transit to save hundreds of millions of dollars on, to invest in other projects, to take far less time to build stride three, to deliver speedy bus transit through Lake Forest Park, and virtually eliminate the drastic environmental and aesthetic impacts to our community. There's really a simple way. But the simple way that we've, the way we found this is through two years of really a lot of research and effort, reading literally more than 10,000 pages of documents. We've done over 100 public records requests. We've dug into models that have been used. We looked at the variables that go into the models. We've done our best to really understand what the rationale is. Did it again. And there's a simple answer. Don't construct a dedicated northbound Bat Lane between 153rd and 165th. And what we're going to do is go over the data, the real data that supports that decision or that recommendation, and also review what we have heard from Sound Transit in our long journey with them in terms of the rationale. I spent almost 10 years at McCaw Cellular, another 20 at Microsoft. Much of that time I spent battling to acquire capital budgets for marketing and computer equipment, and that was a battle. And if you couldn't go in and explain the benefit, the business benefit, you didn't get the money. And so that's the attitude that we've taken, which is to really get under the hood and understand what is the business justification for spending this money and doing what they're planning on doing to Lake Forest Park. These are, I'm not even going to read these. We're all way too aware of these. They're way too painful to go through. These are all the ways that the current plan inflicts damage that is inequitable, significant to our entire community. And I'm not going to read them because they're too long, and everybody here in one way or another is familiar with them. So I'm going to move right past these onto one of the reasons why that damage is so significant to our community. And it all starts with the decision to move the road to the west. Now, this in itself became a really difficult thing to try to figure out why that decision was made when you read the various documents that are available and so on. And what we found is, and I'm kind of boiling this down, is the reasons that Sound Transit gave is, well, we don't need to make 10, as many as 10 full property acquisitions by moving the road to the west. And we talked to property owners along the route that led us to modify the design accordingly. That's kind of encapsulates, there's other things, but they more or less encapsulate those two points. But the facts speak really kind of a different thing. It's the most expensive and environmentally damaging option they could have chosen. They had three that they looked at. They picked the one that was the most expensive and the most damaging to our community when two other options were available. The other thing to note is that of the 10 homes that they had talked about needing to take, nine of those are between 155th and 165th. And that's an important thing when you think about not building a Bat Lane between 155th and 165th. You eliminate the need to take those 10 homes. So that's something I want to have everybody kind of keep in their, in their head. The West Shift was announced just 10 months before the, before Sound Transit issued its DNS approving their 2700 page. I read it all 2700 pages. It was painful, of their SEPA submission for stride three. So just 10 months before that SEPA came out, the decision was announced that they were studying alternatives. So when you think about how long it does to take a SEPA, even though they didn't do a real environmental impact study, they did an environmental checklist and issued a DNS. It was done months before, you would think, based on when it was publicly announced and when the SEPA came out. So things like the noise study that was done, all that was done in 2019, doesn't take in, to our knowledge, doesn't take into any consideration the reflective aspects of the wall, the noise reflection of the wall on, onto the community. It doesn't take into effect the heat islands that are going to be created from the loss of the trees and so on. So there's a lot of questions that we had about, well, gee, with the timing of this and the timing of the SEPA seems awfully strange. And the 30% document, there are 30% plans that were part of the SEPA. It's not clear, and I'm not an engineer, and I would really hope maybe the city could look into this, to look at those 30% plans to see if they reflect the West Shift in those plans or not. Why is this important? The shifting of, if, if the 30% plans do not include the shift to the west, then they already have a plan to build the highway, to build a Bat Lane between 165th and, and the corner here by Starbucks. So the plan would already exist if the 30% plans did not include the West Shift. So that's an important question, and we could use some help in answering that. The 30%, I already mentioned that one. The bottom line is, no one that we've talked to actually really knows how the decision was made, who talked to who, what decisions were made, or what conversations were had, what led to the decision to shift it, and what led to the decision to pick the most expensive version or option that they had that causes the most aesthetic environmental damage to our community. So over the year, over the last year or so, we've been looking at and getting arguments from Sound Transit about why they're building the road here the way they planned to build it. Argument number one, we'll call it argument one. It's a philosophical rationale for Bat Lanes. And the CEO, Tim, said this, we recorded the meeting, was at Brookside. Many of you will remember that. You were there. The whole place was full. And she said at that meeting, and as I said, we recorded it, Bat Lanes are necessary for fast, frequent, reliable bus service shoreline to Bothell. BRT to be functional requires a significant number of Bat Lanes. Reducing it turns it into rapid ride buses, and that's not the mandate of the voters. Two things, that's word salad to me. I don't even understand what that means. I'm not a transportation person, but I don't understand exactly what that means. But the other thing is, that's not the mandate of the voters, is simply not true. The, what we received in Lake Forest Park, if you got your voter's guide, there was a whole section in the voter's guide that described the project in detail. LFP is not even mentioned, let alone a dedicated bus lane in Lake Forest Park. They sent, Sound Transit sent out a 16-page, four-color brochure to every single household, really in the three-county area, and we obviously received those here. There wasn't a single mention in that brochure about a Bat Lane in Lake Forest Park. So the idea that we voted to have a Bat Lane in Lake Forest Park just simply is not true. The second argument we got was it saves bus riders' time. We got this from project manager Bernard Vander Kamp. It was a Sound Transit board meeting. Lori, you might remember this. It was a month-long eventual response to your, the city's request that you so eloquently authored and supported to pause the work. And they finally came out and they said, a northbound Bat Lane reduces bus transit time through LFP during afternoon weekday rush hour by 2.3 minutes, up to 10 minutes when it's congested. And so we got curious about that, 2.3 minutes. Where does that number come from? And we put in a bunch of, of public records requests, and we got some very interesting information back, including the model they used and the output of that model. Sound Transit calculates the time savings. Now, the model looks at the time that the bus goes between bus stops. This is important thing, right? This is bus stop to bus stop to bus stop to bus stop. You cannot make LFP a bus stop to bus stop because the nearest bus stop is at 145th and 30th and ends, if you will, here at, by the Starbucks. So in that model, the, the section of the road that is considered LFP begins at 140, oh, sorry, 145th and 30th. And when you take that timeout, it reduces the, the amount of time the bus takes to go through Lake Forest Park to down to something like 1.5 minutes. But in another document, they show that the, the measurement is actually from 153rd and goes all the way to Cat Whisker Road, my favorite road name, 61st up in Kenmore, runs all the way up there, counts all the time for the bus to get up to there. So again, you remove that time, add in the time to get, once you got through the light to get to 153rd and you're back to where you started. It's not 2.3 minutes. It's more like 1.5 or 1.3 minutes. So none of that made any sense, and the number was inaccurate. And I won't go any further than complaining about it that way. We asked, how did you land on the 10-minute most congested time? And there was no answer for that. There was nothing provided to us that said, well, the way we figured out the 10 minutes was, was this. It was just nothing. We got nothing back. It doesn't mention that the timeframe, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, right, with 10-minute headways, that's 12 buses total that are going to be affected in this timeframe, because there's already a bustling going the other way, and the data shows that there's no impact to the speed of the bus going east or westbound in the morning, whether or not the road is built, build or no build scenario. So the only benefit is, is coming this way in the afternoon during the weekday. The other thing that we found when we looked at the data that they provided, 62% of the time saved on the entire route from the Shoreline Station all the way out to Bothell, 62% of the time saved is in the, what is it, 13 blocks between the Light Rail Station and 15th and 145th. Only 20% of the 2.3 minutes, which isn't really 2.3 minutes, is saved in Lake Forest Park. So that section where 62% of the time is saved doesn't have Bat Lanes. It has a, it has a signalized light, and it has a Q jump on either side of the light at 15th, and that's it. Oh, and that's sorry, they're building the roundabouts at, on the intersection 145th on either side of I-5. Argument number three, and this is where it got interesting. Argument number three, and this is where it got interesting. When we met with Julie Tim and Lori, you were there, and I think Tom, you were there. We had some people from the stewardship foundation and a handful of core people, and my friend and fellow Microsoft worker, Dr. Nitin Gautam, who ran data sciences team at Microsoft, we were all there. And the argument shifted from average time saved to fixing the maximum delay. Now, the minute you move from average to maximum, you don't have, there's a probability of that maximum occurring, doesn't occur all the time, it occurs some of the time. So understanding how often that occurs is really, really important when you do this kind of analytical work. The proof they gave was a, was a single screenshot of Google Maps showing a five to 14-minute delay the buses would face in LFP, and said that with the bat lane, the bus would go two to nine minutes faster without it. So, and, and they said travel times are independent and reproducible. No other research was offered in that meeting or in the subsequent document that they sent out to us. Um, the next page shows you the, the, the actual Google map, and it looks terrible. I mean, you see that red running from almost 153rd all the way down to Town Center? That's awful, and, and it's a five to 14-minute commute at that. And we looked at that one, well, that's pretty bad, red is bad. Other colors are better, red is the worst color you can have. And that was the, that was the Google map they showed us. Well, we got curious, and we took a closer look, the next page shows you a closer look. The five to 14 minutes includes 1.5 miles, not 1.3, which is the distance of the northbound bus lane, because we have a bus lane that starts already at 41st. Um, and if you look down below, you can see this little arrow over a W, and another arrow that if you look really close, it says Wednesday at 5:10 PM. So it's a snapshot at 5:10 PM. So we went and replicated the same methodology to pull the Google map, and we took Wednesdays, and we went through, and we looked at Monday from 5:10 PM, we looked at Tuesday at 5:10 PM, we looked at Wednesday at 5:10 PM, that's the middle one, that's the one they showed, to Thursday at 5:10 PM and Friday. And you can see there's a variance in the, the minimum and the maximum times. Three to seven minutes on Monday, three to eight on Tuesday, four to 12, that's the bad day, three to 10 on Thursdays and three to seven on Friday. There's variance, it's what's to be expected in traffic, it isn't the same all the time. And so it kind of looked like they cherry picked the one Google map that gave the longest delay. Um, and so we scratched our heads about that. And what we decided to do, my friend Nitin and I, was to figure out a way to, um, download detailed Google traffic data. And we found a website that we could go to and download this data, and we downloaded it for an entire month of March of 2023 and March of 2019. We got it in 10-minute increments, we got the minimum, the maximum, and the average time to go that 10 minutes throughout the day. We isolated the 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then we determined what the probabilities were of hitting the maximum delay. It's pretty straightforward work, actually, if you know how to use SQL and, you're a doctor in physics. Um, and I'm not, by the way, I want to point that out. And so we took that extract, and the next page shows you the results, I had to have a chart in here. Uh, there, oops. So the main thing about this chart, on the left, it's all of 145th. The next chart is 140, I-5 to, and 145th, the 145th and 17th where the bus stop is. The next one is 145th to 17th on Bothell Way. And then, um, we pick up and we do, and then 145th to 153rd. Because again, it goes bus stop to bus stop, and it goes through further west, or sorry, further east, and then comes around through the light, there's dwell time at the light, I might add. And then we isolated LFP, we've got LFP from 153rd to 165th, LFP from 165th to 41st, all of LFP, the entire road. And what we see is that between 153rd and 165th, the maximum, uh, the maximum delay that we saw in the two-hour timeframe was five minutes. The probability of that five minutes hitting at some point in time during that two hours is 2%. So we look at that as, as a data scientist and as a person familiar with using data and say, we're solving a problem that doesn't really need to be solved in that particular section of the roadway. And it's this discreet analysis of the roadway. When you're spending $285 million in Lake Forest Park in capital for, for land purchases and for capital costs of construction, when you're spending $285 million, I expect as a citizen and as a taxpayer and as a resident of LFP, that we're going to have these answers. That the, that there would be enough care and interest to figure out what's the best design for our community. And it does not appear to have happened. So once again, how do we break through to Sound Transit board members? Because I don't think it makes any sense at all to talk to staff members, they're doing their job, they've been told what to do. I, I just, you know, we've done it in the past, I don't think it's going to work, but that's my own personal opinion. So how can we help them? Don't build the bat lane. It would marginally impact the bus's transit time passing through LFP during the peak hours during the weekday afternoon. It impacts far fewer property owners, we wouldn't do anything between 155th and 165th. Actually, we'd probably put, you know, you'd probably put a signalized light at a bus pullout on the other side, on the, what would that be, the south side of 165th. It certainly would cost less, and it wouldn't take anywhere near as long to build it. So we're trying to figure out what's wrong with this picture, how do we get this message across? And I think the way to do that is talking to the board. And this is where the, I kind of put this little provocative thing in here, what's the council's legacy going to be? Core is behind you 100%, and people in this room are just a, a small, you know, the tip of the, of the iceberg of core support in this city. It's very broad, in case you haven't noticed, it is very broad. LFP Stewardship Foundation is behind you. And really nearly every resident that we've ever encountered or talked to supports doing something about this. And we want to help you, but we think you take the leadership position here. You know, you need to be the ones, because they're not going to talk, you know, if I call them up and I want to talk to Claudia Balducci, I've got like zero, I got a better chance of talking to, no, I, I didn't mean that. That just popped out. So I think we can help, we can be evidence, we can show facts. If we're wrong, and we've, we've done this analysis wrong, let us know, tell us. But I think we've got a strong story here, and I think we want to work with the council as a whole. Ooh, that's a pun, council is, anyway, that, um, to work with the council as a whole to help get to the board members and tell this economic story and environmental damage. So that's our presentation. And thank you again for the time to be able to come in and share it with you. Next, thank you, thank you, thank you. Next time I'm going to put my hair up. See what happens. I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Jeff, to you and your team for putting this incredible work together. It really is, um, uh, very well documented in contrast to the rationales that we have gotten for some of these same points from Sound Transit. And you know, I'm kind of on record as, as saying that in many forums. But, uh, and I think that the challenge is to get the facts out there and to actually have them listened to at this stage in the process, because momentum seems to drive this through, uh, at every stage. But with that, I'll just, with those, thanks to you and your team and to all of you who showed up today and listened to this presentation and who are concerned about this as we are. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. Council member Riddle, you're going first every time today.
Thank you. So when it comes to the stretch between 153rd, 153rd or 165th?
It depends if Sound Transit can come up with a plan to cross Blachetta Creek. They've tried three times and failed. There's another plan they're working on, um, and we don't know what the status of that plan is.
Okay, so assuming 153rd, if they weren't able to get to.
If they put the bat lane in, then it would be just 165th on. If they don't put the bat lane in, 153rd, then we don't have a continuous bat lane. It's not a bat lane anymore, and the word salad of our former CEO.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there's going to be bat lanes before and after this section. And so the, the, the proposal is to eliminate the bat lane just between those.
We're eliminating, we're recommending eliminating the bat lane in the section of the roadway that has by far the least probability of seeing a maximum delay. And that is between 165th and 165th.
So, um, how, how do you see, how would, how would you see the buses getting back into mainline traffic when the bat lane ends?
I'm not an engineer. So if you're, you're asking me, how does the bat, how does the bus get back into the bus lane at 165th on?
No, how does it get out of the bus, a bat lane when it ends down at 153rd?
Like I said, I'm not an engineer, um, and I'm always nervous around other engineers who, um, know way more about engineering than I do. But there would probably be a need for a right turn lane there anyway. Because the traffic comes up to 165th, putting a, a right-hand turn lane, and one of the misnomers about a bat lane is that it's a bus only, it's not a bus only. It's a bus and any car that needs to turn right. And I will add one other thing about the model that was developed that came up with the 2.3 minutes that, whatever. That model has an input where you can put a value for right-hand turn lanes. Zero, like no problem at all, one being a little problem, three being a bigger problem, two being a bigger problem, and three being a very big problem. So it waits the model to say, well, there's a lot of right-hand turns. John, how many right-hand turns do we have on northbound? Forty-six right-hand turns. That's hundreds of homes, six or seven condominiums and apartment complexes who all are going to have to turn right when they come home. So yes, I think some treatment at 165th that puts a, a right-hand turn lane in that a bus can use would be a logical, a logical thing.
And then at 153rd, would, there's a bus stop there planned? So I understand that hasn't changed.
Well, its location, as I understand it, has changed. It's going to be on the other side of 155th, 153rd.
Yeah, the current, the current side. So it has, you have to get through the light to get to the bus stop. So even if it's on the other side. Are they pulling it south?
There'll be a bat lane coming from 145th all the way down to 153rd.
Okay, so the two lanes of traffic are normal. There's a bus pullout lane, a queue jump, and that has a signalized light. So the red is for the cars, the bus can get green and pull ahead. Because there's already, the, the lane is already there.
So, but that doesn't really help us if it's just going to get to the other side of the, and, and stop at a bus stop. I mean, I guess that's, I just try to understand, so now it's gone through the light, it stops at the bus stop and beyond north of 155th, there's no bat lane, so it has to get back into traffic, is that, is that the design?
In the section of the highway with the lowest probability of the maximum delay occurring.
Okay, and the section of the highway that has the highest 85 percentile speeds to try to merge back into.
I'm sorry.
So in that section of the highway, the speeds have reached 50 miles per hour at the 85th percentile. That means 15% of the cars driving on that road are going faster than 50 miles an hour.
It also indicates that there's not a lot of traffic. Because if you can drive that fast on that section of the road, there aren't a lot of cars on the road. I'm not, I'm not advocating driving fast, I'm just saying you can't drive fast if there's, if there's a lot of cars on the road.
And you can't merge into it from a bus stop either.
I'm not sure I understand your question at all.
Not sure I can make it more clear. If you've got a bus stop but no bat lane continuing.
Bus stop where?
At 153rd.
Okay, it's on the other side of 153rd, yes, so the bus pulls over and stops, it's a signalized light. There's a bus lane on the other side of 153rd. The bus, if they cross, if they can figure out how to cross Blachetta Creek, then the bus keep, continues on in a bus lane, and it would have to at 155th and merge into general purpose traffic on a section of the road with the least likely probability of a maximum delay. The, the, keep in mind, Councilman Riddle, the, um, the fact is that it isn't a dedicated bus lane. If a car needs to turn right, it can get in that lane. And as John pointed out, there's 47 between 145th and, and Town Center, there's 47 right-hand turns.
I just wanted to make a point with, at 153rd. Okay, so right now, the, there wouldn't be much of any change at all at that 153rd traffic light, except for the fact of adding another signal at 153rd for the bus only. So what happens is before the traffic light, at the traffic light before the merge, the normal cars are stopped. Then the bus goes ahead before the cars and has a free access into the general purpose lanes. So it, there's no impedance to the, to the bus at all to go on down to 165th. So it goes ahead of all the other cars, and after the bus goes, then the traffic signal changes for the traffic. So the traffic ends up being after the bus, so that's how that works.
Yeah, I mean, that, I guess, that, that works if you have the bus stopping there, but if you're flowing through traffic, you have to make some sort of merge into traffic. And I was just curious, you guys had, had, had.
Well, like I said, we're not engineers at all, so I'm not, I'm not, and we're not the right people to answer that question.
The other thing is the bus has to stop there, I mean, that's where the bus stops, the bus stops at 153rd. So that, if there's traffic, they've signaled that, that lane anyway that they're coming.
Okay, I'm just, you leave the bus stop at 153rd, you're in your bat lane, if we can get across Blachetta Creek, you get to 165th. If the light is red, you stop, you get your.
There's no light at 165th.
So you're adding a light at 165th? Oh, I am so confused.
Yeah. There's no light, it hasn't been, and I don't believe is the, a plan for Sound Transit to put a light, whether it's a full bat lane or not at 165th.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I, I can, I have some information I can provide for you that will explain that, what, in more detail.
And, and I want to apologize.
Yeah.
Um, that we have not had the opportunity, we have not made the effort to sit down and talk to you and spend more time about this, it's very complicated. And I can imagine that trying to absorb all this, you know, a short meeting is challenging. You know, we've had similar opportunities to talk to all the other council members, but we have failed in our getting together with you. And I promise you that you will hear from us very shortly, and we'll try to sit down and spend, you know, a good hour going over, um, your questions and your thoughts and getting your opinions. Because it's important to us that you support the effort that we, um, try to not have the kind of devastating, uh, impact on our community that the current plan has.
So can I, can you recap? I think I'm recapping, so let me just say. There would be a bat lane from, uh, 145th to 153rd or 165th. To one fifty third or one fifty fifth.
Correct.
Correct. Then there would be no bat lane. Except you would probably have. A signalized light and a queue jump at one sixty fifth. To start the bat lane that kind of exists from one sixty fifth to the end. So we're talking about that transition. In the middle, the transition from. The south side of one sixty fifth is not that complicated because that is. A light and in fact, there's going to be more stopping at that light due to the traffic changes further north. But I think Councilmember Riddle's question is if it's one fifty fifth or one fifty third, either one. How does the bus get back into the regular lane? So I think that's a. A fair question and and one that can warrant some further discussion.
I I I absolutely, and it would matter only when the traffic is at its worst.
Yes.
Which we know is. Doesn't happen very often. And it only affect.
And I do think the point of the of the lanes, like even if you try to, I mean, so I'm thinking of Bryley's Barbecue. Coming out of Bryley's Barbecue. You know, there, I do think that the number of right turn lanes is is an interesting consideration. So. Comments from other council members, questions from other council members. Councilmember Saunders, sorry, I didn't see your little hand up there.
I was hesitating to to even comment because I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
All right, terrific. I relocated in the house to get better wifi. Oh, I just wanted to thank Jeff and and everybody who's there. With Core, supporting Core. I I'm a big supporter. My, I think you know that, but I just wanted to say that. It would be. It'll, it'll be a relief if we can get some kind of a compromise, if we can get Sound Transit to. You know. Meet us halfway if nothing else. But I just, I really appreciate all the work that you're putting into this because I know it's been. A long time. And lots, a lot of work. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, I'm awesome. Yeah, thank you for for giving the presentation. I appreciate the data driven approach. I think many of you know my feelings on the project that I'm becoming more and more disillusioned with it as a transit rider. It seems that if you compare transit service today with transit service that will have when the project opens. It'll be worse in terms of frequency and transfers and number of bus stops. So I'm. Becoming increasingly disappointed with Sound Transit and Metro on that regard. Also, the project is over budget and delayed by quite a bit. And so I think, yeah, coming up with ways to help save that. Sound Transit money and time, I would hope they'd appreciate it. I think a lot of this will depend on what they ultimately come up with for crossing the Bichetla Creek. And that if they have. The only way to cross Bichetla Creek is going to be to widen the road and build into the ravine. Then that is very challenging from an engineering perspective. And I think, you know, having an alternative where they don't have to do that. Would save them substantial money. I agree with Councilmember Riddle, and I experienced this myself. When I take the bus, like I did today, from. My house over by one forty fifth to City Hall. The bus stops at one forty fifth and then that's where the the existing bat lane ends. And so the bus. At one forty fifth has to merge into traffic and coming right after a traffic like that can be a challenge sometimes. Likewise, at one fifty third. So I think if you can. Come, you know, at least I know you're not engineers, but if you can have some level of proposal for. You know, the bus stop is on the far side of one fifty third. If there is a decent stream of traffic, how can the bus get into the general lane just north of one fifty third? Or one fifty fifth? I I think that will go a long way to helping Sound Transit to accept this. Because it, you know, it. Ultimately, a bat lane is better than a queue jump, just, you know, in an objective sense, unless there's something infeasible about. The bat lane such as crossing Bichetla Creek. And so that's Sound Transit's default. I think it's really good that you're taking a segment by segment approach. That you're not saying just cancel the bat lane everywhere, that you're focusing on this ten block zone. So I think that's really good so that you're not coming across as, you know, that's that's. Kneecap the entire project. But yeah, I think coming up, you know, explaining what your proposal is, I think one sixty fifth is easier. Because. The bus is in the general lane. It goes through the light at one sixty fifth and then it can merge into the new bat lane just north of one sixty fifth. That's going to, you're basically just changing lanes into an empty lane. That part's easy. So I think one fifty third or one fifty fifth, that is, is the the trouble area for the bus getting into the general lane. So I think that's, I'd like to see, you know, if you can come up with some. More detailed idea, you know, how can the bus do that effectively? I think we should, sorry, I'm rambling at this point. I think that. Everything I've heard from Sound Transit is that they have decided on bat lane, so it's going to be up to us to actively change their mind. I think we should continue to lobby them both as a council and as the members of the public. But I think being realistic, I think it's going to be an uphill battle because they're close to being a hundred percent complete with their design. I think Bichetla Creek is sort of the the ma- the major holdout. And so we're going to have to actively get them to change their mind rather than build it up from from the ground.
You mentioned your, the one forty fifth stop. I'm not sure all the people here know.
Oh, sure. And then one of my gripes is because of what's going to happen with Metro and Sound Transit, there's the bus stop that. The northbound stop at this kidney center will be closed. So I'm a little disappointed on a personal level. That's the bus stop I get on to get to City Hall. So I'll have to walk up to one fifty third myself just to catch the bus to City Hall. So. Yeah, I'm not thrilled by that at a personal level.
And that, my understanding is that bus stop was in the original proposal. And that is an area that's zoned for multifamily housing for the future. And there is existing multifamily housing there. So that Councilmember Goldman's concern. Is a broader concern for the city in terms of transit benefits overall. Not not talking about just light rail, but transit benefits overall for the city.
Yeah, so for for members of the public, the plan, the existing buses are the Sound Transit five twenty two, the Metro three seventy two. Both of those buses will go down one forty fifth street. And so there will no longer be a north south bus. That goes between Lake Forest Park and Lake City. And so that's why that bus stop will be closing.
We we have a suggestion for a slogan. The the old slogan would be, we. We, Sound Transit, we take you where you want to go. And the new slogan is Sound Transit will take you where we want you to go. I don't think that. They've, they're warm to that, but.
Yes, Councilmember. Good. And then Councilmember Riddle.
Okay, just to recap, since I'm in the middle of. The Sound Transit coming right next to my road. So the bu- the bus lane or the bus stop. Is going to be moved south of one fifty third. So that's why they're taking more of the Davy Tree lot so that they can. Put the bus there. The other thing, it's only one traffic light. So the change would be from one traffic light to one traffic light. And the other. Part for me that's devastating is the amount of environmental damage and as well as the stormwater runoff. Because they've been running around. The Jacobs Engineering has been running around trying to, you know, catch up with their stormwater runoff. And the environmental impact to Lake Forest Park and taking down those trees will also put us behind in our climate action goals, I believe. Because it's equivalent to five acres of forest. So those are also other concerns as well as the is the delicate topography between one fifty fifth. And one sixty fifth, it's more, it's at, it it's more. Soft slope there. There's a higher angle. The elevation from the lake to shoreline is greater. And it's just. Them removing an aircraft carrier's worth of dirt will also impact our environment with the all the diesel trucks. So that's kind of my point.
Councilmember Riddle.
Apologies for interrupting. So could you confirm, so at one fifty third, will the bus, the northbound bus stop be on the south side of one fifty third?
According to the. Schematic that I've seen, yes.
I just wanted to confirm because I'm looking at the role plot that's dated April twenty twenty three. And that shows the bus stop on the north side. I think if the bus stops on the south side, that actually makes the engineering easier because then you can have a proper queue jump at one fifty third. And so the bus stops on the south side, basically it stops by Bryley's. And then there's a bus only signal that gets the bus into traffic ahead of the cars in the next lane.
And you wouldn't have to cross Bichetta Creek.
But that does depend, I I maybe we can get confirmation from city staff that the bus has been moved to the south side of one fifty third, not the north side.
Just a brief update, time wise. The way it's set up now, there's many statements about the existence of a hundred percent design. Not in official capacity. Once it reaches that point. And Sound Transit says, here it is, city, we're going to put it on the project website. Currently, I plan on taking a few days off next week. When I come back from the July fourth week, I'm going to be looking for that design. Put it on the city's webpage. I was out at the Bichetla Creek area last week. And we'll know much more after July eighth. I know that they've shown a design that some people are calling hundred percent design. For property acquisitions and different private discussions, which I am not part of. So that that'll be the first step after July eighth that begins to answer some of these questions. Some changes were made. And so let's wait and see what that is. The reason we're talking about it is the geotech. We're issuing critical area permits for some of the geotech sites. Fortunately, three that were down in the ravine and Bichetla Creek are no longer being. Requested. That would inform the final. Construction drawings. So we're getting there. It just asked for another week or two, and then the city will have that and be able to. Answer some of these questions a little bit more informed.
Point of clarification, do they have property interest for the geotech work that they are proposing to do or property owner approval?
They do. So so far, there are more coming. We've only approved two. One was in a side yard of a private house, small little slope. Property owner gave their authorization. The other one's in a wash dot right away. The three that we're going to be looking at in the next week or two are different situation. But it's clear that the three where a crane was scheduled to pick up a bore. Machine, put it down into the ravine. Or some sort of engineering design down in Bichetla Creek is no longer being requested.
Thank you, but as of now, you don't know whether the. One fifty third bus stop is proposed to be south of one fifty third or north. Is that correct or?
That's correct. Not officially until I see that. I've seen the role plot and the rest I've heard bearing opinions. I was out on the. Area last week and I've been told that. Until I see something official, I'm not willing to speak to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Riddle, your turn.
Yeah. Yeah, and I I think I was just gonna sort of launch off of Councilmember Goldman's comment about the change in the bus service and one of the. One of the things is a lot of folks who live in the North King County and they're getting services, they get their services down on Lake City. And so now. It's affecting commuters. It's affecting folks getting services that are already at a disadvantage because. They need the services. So it's it's an interesting conundrum that they've created for themselves by prioritizing. Getting everyone to the link rather than prioritizing getting people where they want to go.
That's a really good point about the Lake City community because they're losing bus service as well. So that was, and you know, it's not necessarily. The bus stop, the link light rail stop at one thirtieth isn't curing the Lake City corridor at all, so. Any other comments? Deputy Mayor, I mean Mayor. Mayor, would you like to say anything or or city administrator, since this is a topic of concern of both the.
Sure, thank you.
Administration and the city council level.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the present. Presentation. There's a lot of hard work that's gone into this. I mean, I think the data supports. The. You know, the the path that that the community seems to be wanting to go towards. I I shouldn't say seems. Everyone seems to be very against doing something that makes no sense when it comes to both the from a. If you even forget about the financial status of of Sound Transit. These time savings are de minimis. And I think that the impacts to this community, both environmentally and from a. You know, a. Aesthetic standpoint are are pretty substantial. And as we said for decades, the community is. Wedded to protecting the environment and this kind of environmental. Damage is something that is nothing that we can ever. You know, consider that is acceptable to the community. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to. To get. Sound Transit off the dime and listen. You know, carefully. Their response to us about speed limits was again, a. Sort of a canned answer, if you will. It was again, going to. Lane widths. And it was not about lane widths. We already know that the lane widths are where as narrow as they can get them. And so what that indicates to me is there's a communication problem with. Both between the executive team at Sound Transit and their staff and and the board and to Jeff's comments about. Talking to the board, it is essential that we continue to look at what we can do to communicate with them. Many of the board members that I've communicated with, which is quite on a quite regular basis, they know. Literally less than what I can show you on my fingers about our our situation here. And so the education process is something that is is critical in this in this whole scenario and. To Mark's comments about the hundred percent design, we have not seen it. We, it is not in our hands. They've been threatening this for. Over a year that they're at a hundred percent. So there is still time to figure this out. And I would, I would say that. The the biggest thing right now is to continue to advocate for. Rational decisions. The. The money is not necessarily going to resonate with the board. Unfortunately, the two hundred and sixty five, two hundred and eighty five, five hundred million dollars. Unfortunately, their budgets are so massive that they're they're kind of putting, they put blinders on to some of the smaller. Pieces of the puzzle. And so I think that the biggest. Way to approach this continues to be from an environmental standpoint, Bichetta Creek is a big deal. I mean, we know this. Sat with CEO Sparman in my office early this year and educated him on what Bichetta Creek, Bichetta means. And he. He responded to that very carefully and and he does understand it. I just question whether the board knows it and whether. The staff is is communicating to to the board about these things. So I'll leave it there, but I think that there's still an opportunity for us to find some compromise and to find some. Really. I don't even know how to describe it, rational behavior on on the part of Sound Transit.
Phil, anything you would like to ask? Councilmember.
Thank you. I am. Really impressed with the involvement and the thoughtfulness and the analysis that our citizens have done. And to have this many people. Come to a council meeting. I might say this is more than we've had all year combined. So it really shows an interest upon our citizens of what we do. As a city and how we respond to these kinds of improvements that are being suggested. I have not commented otherwise on this because I am a Sound Transit employee. I, out of respect, am not participating in the discussions while I have nothing to do with this program. I do work on another part of of Sound Transit's work, so I accuse myself from any discussion. But I do want to express the appreciation. To see you come out. Time and time again to look for alternatives that benefit all of us. And that really shows what citizens of Lake Forest Park mean. When they talk about community, environment, safety. And what it means to live in Lake Forest Park and our values. Thank you.
So council members, I think, given the comments here tonight. We will have a discussion about follow up with Sound Transit Executive and Board. At our council meeting on Thursday. And meanwhile, if. And meanwhile, if you have uh individual thoughts about that, uh, send them my way by email. And uh, I will uh try to put them forward at our council meeting on Thursday. Uh, I think uh, at the very least, it certainly seems timely to send a follow-up letter yet again, um, and include some of this latest information. We have heard the the analysis far more detailed than the Google map analysis we previously got, which was actually promised by the CEO at the public meeting, but was so simplistic as to be. Well, I won't say, but, well, I will say.
It was embarrassing.
Almost insulting, really. Um, so uh, so thank you for the the hard work diving into all that data. I really appreciate it and the thoughtfulness, not not trying to do um, trying to put together something that accommodates the transit needs and the transit benefits, looking at where the real transit benefits are. So appreciate that very much. Uh, I do want to say, one of Sound Transit's also false arguments is that it's too late. And we have heard this from the draft sixty percent uh, design where there was very little uh actually provided. Um, the draft thirty percent design, very little detail provided. So we requested the pause as a city at the draft sixty percent design stage. And so this running argument that it's always too late is really hard to swallow when uh we have been um requesting the dialogue and to look at design alternatives since the draft sixty percent stage. So that's another, that's an, you have four false arguments. Anyway, thank you with that. We appreciate you all coming. I echo Councilmember Lebo's uh comments. This is our biggest group attendance for the year so far, so we really appreciate it. And we um appreciate the work, the passion and the concern. And hopefully, uh, we'll keep at it and and uh see what we can do. Thank you all for coming. With that, we'll move on to item D, which we added. I'll let everyone have a chance to leave. Really nice job, actually. So council members, what I wanted to bring to your attention is following up on our retreat and some of our budget discussions. If we wanted to consider putting a levee lid lift of some sort on the ballot in twenty twenty-five, the first step would be to um engage a consultant to help us and um and figure out how to um brainstorm and scope and stage the work as including the really important aspect of community involvement. Um, and making sure that we uh take our lessons learned from the last effort and take them seriously to heart and try to set up a process for success. And um, and so uh, I would like us to um uh to continue to talk about this. I wanted to get the sense of the council, if that was something uh you were interested in informally. And uh, and then we can proceed with the administration to do some work on at least uh a draft scope of work for a consultant contract. It might have to be in phases for the same reason that our Councilmember Lebo Budget Chair, Budget Chair Lebo has uh has pointed out so so, you know, so accurately, so. But.
Wait, we have to for the buttons. Um, no, I and I think, I think regardless of of if we're sure we're going to do a levy lid lift next year, I think the education period portion and the community involvement portion, I think, should go forward regardless. I think there was already a lot of um a lot of opportunities for us to see that the community doesn't really understand how this unnecessarily complex property taxes process works. Um, and so I do think that we should at the very least have a a phase of education and outreach. And then if the council decides a phase of actual engagement for specifics.
Um, yeah, I agree completely with what Councilmember Riddle said. Um, I think we need a long uh takeoff strip. Because what we learned four years ago with Prop one was there was a lot of confusion. A lot of people mistakenly thought, oh, my home went up in value thirty percent, therefore my property tax went up thirty percent. So why isn't the city flush with money? And that's not, we we understand that that's not how our property tax system works, but I think it's so important to make the sure the community is understanding that. That if the prop homes go up thirty percent, their taxes go down twenty-nine percent. And that way, there's a little one percent increase. Um, so I think early education, early engagement with the community is going to be so critical with this.
Next.
I agree with that. Education and research.
I'm fine with proceeding. I think to do the exploratory and to look what it means, I'm fine.
Councilmember Saunders.
I'm fine with that as well. Education and research.
Okay. Any further comments before or observations or requests before we adjourn? Thank you all. Have a good night. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.